So just to reiterate for the purposes of the recording, today the PC is going to be having a town hall meeting. We are going to be just kind of going over some of the stuff that we've done this past year, things that we're going to be doing in the near future. The items that we'll talk about here will hopefully all get uploaded to YouTube, but because this is a private session, semi-private session, I should say. If we record anything that goes off into tangents that are maybe talking about things that shouldn't be public yet, I will edit that out before I upload it to YouTube. But so we shouldn't feel restricted here. We can talk about whatever we need to hear. And yeah, so pretty much I just kind of want to go over the stuff we've done, kind of get people's thoughts on it. We could just kind of have an open discussion. I have a series of items here on the stream on Discord. If you connect to the live stream, you can see what I've got up on here. There's a few different items we can discuss, but this isn't really like a hard and fast itinerary. This is just kind of things that I think would be nice to do. So yeah, let's just go ahead and get it kicked off. Mark, I'm kind of throwing this at you at the last minute. I meant to approach you about this yesterday, but indisposed. Let's start with the world championship and just make sure that we've got everything lined up that we need for that. So do you want to take it away and talk a little bit about what we've done and what we anticipate coming up?
Yeah, so I think so far the the world championship circuit that we've been trying this year has gone pretty well. We've had a good number of participants and keeping our numbers, our intended invite numbers smaller this year is going to make it kind of really easy, I think, to get a good core 16 there. We've got three invites right now for non-PC events, two from Brazil, one from Czech. We did have four open for this, so I don't know if there's another live event. I thought there was going to be one in France that we hoped to offer for.
There was one in France in June. They would have, they would have been done already. We can try to reach out to them and see if we want to find out about that.
The other option is I think we're doing the actual championship. It's going to be October 18th, which I believe is one week after the Czech final championship. So we could offer a spot for that if the France group is not interested.
Cool.
But yeah, we slated four slots, you know, two for last year's champion and runner-up, four for in-person bigger events. And then 12 and however many we didn't get from the others from the circuit. So I think check in with France. I don't know who the contact is there. And if they're not interested, we'll check in with, I assume Axtor is the right person to ask about the Czech finals?
Axtor is often the one that has done stuff for the Czech Republic or Czechia, rather. He has, I understand, been running into some health issues. But we can always post publicly on the, the Czechs have a Facebook group. And so we can always reach out there or try to get ahold of Axtor. For France, it's Enola, the same guy that did the Hobbit draft game.
Oh, okay.
He's, yeah.
The same as Enolin on Gimp, or is that a difference?
I don't think so. I could be wrong, but I don't, I don't think it's the same guy now.
He's, he's third right now in the circuit points. Thought maybe it was the same person, but yeah, I'm happy to reach out to either of them as, as we want to move forward here. But I think we're in good shape for making that event happen. I don't want to put anybody, I don't want to volunteer anybody, but I've been assuming Katara that we're going to commentate that and others are of course welcome.
Yeah, I was, I was absolutely planning on doing that. One thing that I think we might need to do is, I don't know if we have a day of schedule put together yet of what exactly like hours, times, rounds, what all we were planning on doing. So we might need to get that put together just so that we can, well, first of all, know ourselves what we're, what we're getting into. But also so we can announce it and talk about that.
That's a great slot. I'll put together kind of a example, kind of rough draft.
We can, of course, just copy what we did last year. I don't know, or even mostly what we did last year minus perhaps the sealed aspect. I, I mean, but I'm, I'm open to whatever for that.
All right, I'm making myself a to-do just to put together some options for us to talk about for how it should go. I can think of a couple of different ways we might want to do it. I don't think there's a right or a wrong answer here necessarily, but I'll do a little bit of a write-up and post it to the PC or the White Council channel.
Cool.
Just putting that as a to-do for myself for this week. I'm traveling this week, so I almost certainly will have some time in the evenings where I've got nothing else going on.
Right on. Does anybody have any thoughts or anything on world championship stuff? So this is embarrassing for me to admit, but I still have not actually sent out most of the prizes for the last year's world championship. I did get all the top eight taken care of, but I am looking at a pile of envelopes over here on my, on my, on my shelf that I need to get out. I just need to stuff them and, and send them. The international shipping stuff gets, makes things complicated because I can't just, last year I lied for a lot of them and just said it was documents, but some of these are going to be too thick for that. I'm going to have to put them into a bubble envelope.
Yeah, that was one of the other things I wanted to mention for this year is I don't, I don't know if it's a lack of effort or a lack of resources, but I don't have the kind of surprise support this year that we've had in years past. I'm also not really clear how much the physical prize support outside of the custom card and maybe, you know, the top, top two or top eight plaques. Anybody's really been competing for, so I don't know how important it is that we, we do or don't have more to offer. But I currently am effectively have nothing put together for, for prize support. I am happy to purchase kind of some plaques like we have in years past. I know those were donated previously and Katara, you gave me a name, but I couldn't figure out who they are.
Harry Duff is the guy that has done those in the past. So, and yeah, we, and I've even told him in the past that yeah, it's, it's kind of, kind of crazy that he was willing to offer them to us for, for free. And we were willing to just take a discount even, or even pay a full price if it became too much of a, too much of a.
Yeah, assuming we're not, I don't know how expensive these things are, but I'm certainly happy to go out of pocket for top two, depending on how much they are maybe for top eight.
And I'll definitely, I'll, I'll definitely chip in on those. I believe when I spoke with him about it a couple of years ago, he said that a full set of this would run about $200 for the top eight. Which yeah, is not, is not bad. I could definitely help out with that. I've also got over here on my shelf, I've also got two booster boxes. Because when I purchased the ones for last year, I got them in pairs, kind of anticipating this. So I have a, once again, a Mount Doom booster box and a Fellowship of the Ring booster box, just like we had last year for top one and two. There was also a guy that sent me his set of foil cards, anticipating that we would just be able to hand them out. I handed out some of them, or I should say raffled them off. Not all of them have actually been shipped off yet. But so there's a good number of those foils. I'm willing to pitch in my own foils. I also have a stack of foils, although none of them are as impressive as his. Cause he had stuff like, like a Chinese glam drink and stuff like that in there, things that were actually quite, quite appealing.
Yeah, I've got a stack as well, but I don't think it's something that anybody really wants for prize support.
That's all my foils. They're mostly commons and uncommons or raves that nobody cares about, but the ones that he sent in were some, were some good, good promos, good stuff there. Last year, one of the things that I did was I kind of went around and tried to buy up a bunch of individual booster lots and sent out a, it was basically a collection of like seven boosters, one from each, you know, of several different sets, which was kind of a neat little thing that people could use as the start of like a display, even if they didn't want to open them up for the cards themselves. But yeah, so that's obviously what we did last year. This year. Yeah, I don't know. A booster box to the top of two, to the top two seems pretty good to me. We've got enough little goodies that we could probably, you know, send a bunch of stuff to the top eight. And then if we did the plaques, I mean, it's less than we did last year, but I think it would still be a good.
Yeah, I suspect it being less, less than we did last year is, is fine. I really wish we had some kind of, you know, data or feedback on how much people cared about the physical prizes.
And you know, maybe that's actually.
We want to go more into it.
One of the things on here that we need to talk about is the survey, because last year we, I dropped the ball and did not send out the survey because I was in the middle of doing all the V2 stuff. But in years past, we had that big old survey that we sent out to people and promised them a promo or something on, on Gimp if they would, if they'd fill it out. And that was really good data for, for following through. And I definitely feel it's lack this year, not having that, that guidance of what people are thinking. So we should definitely look at trying to do that this year.
I feel like the booster boxes are the sort of main thing that people probably care about for the top, the top two.
I'm sorry, what was that, Nelson?
I think the, just the booster boxes are often a good enough thing because a sealed booster boxes is pretty good currency nowadays.
Yeah.
But I think those are like more than just, you know, oh, you get a few random packs or you get a couple, you know, random foils. Those are a lot less important. But yeah, if we have a booster box for each of the top two and then the plaques, I think that's probably going to be sufficient.
Now, another thing too, that we did in past years was the deck box that was the trophy effectively for, for positions one and two. The first year that I did those, I got them all done in advance in a way that I had the guys sit down and basically carve out like two of every culture so that I could just piece the, glue the pieces together afterwards with the selection of the, of what they chose. This last year, I did something similar, but it was with a different person. It was actually with Harry Duff himself that decided that he wanted to try and branch off into, into woodworking like that. But unfortunately, I think that, that was a bit much burden on him. So they ended up being very delayed, very late, and I didn't get them until right at the very end. And there were problems with the, the build. It turned out that I had misread the template and so parts of the engraving were upside down. That was not, that was not great. Cause in, in years past, the, the ring inscription went all the way around on the top piece, but I had to flip those pieces around on the inside because they were upside down. Not great, but so I don't know whether to keep doing that or not. I mean, I don't know. Plaques maybe could be enough.
Yeah, let's for sure play on the plaques and the two booster boxes.
And maybe just leave it at that, like, I mean, or.
Maybe just leave it at that. And if the survey comes back with prize support was meh this year, then we figure out how to up it for next. But I don't, from, from talking to the players, like, I know some people do have collections and so I'm sure that they are excited to try to get some of this stuff. But I definitely have the impression that most people are playing for the clout, you know, they want to play against the best players. They want to show that they're a best player. That's my takeaway from, from those conversations, whether it's the most accurate or not, I don't know.
Mazdrav mentions in chat, how about some nicely painted water miniatures, maybe some small one figurine diorama to be used as a marker of the fellowship on the site path? That's not a bad idea for a small thing that could be, you know, we'd have to investigate that and see what, what sort of thing is out there on the market, but.
I'm sure there's loads of minis. I don't know if we have anybody who can do a nice painting job. I'm pretty, pretty crap at models.
Oh, and actually there was something else on here that I was, it was an idea that I had a little while ago that I wanted to run by you guys. Regarding the marketing of the world championship, that's something that I've been really bad about lately is trying to make sure that we have our posts going out beforehand. And so I think for the world championship itself, we need to try and make sure that we're making posts about a month before. But so I had this idea about basically inventing some sort of deranged character that was really, really mad about the fact that Best Melus has won twice in a row. And so he goes out on a tirade, basically putting out a bounty on his head with kind of the tagline, Best Melus must fall. Like there must, he must not return, you know, there, there, there must be no return of the king, you know, like, or, or, or stuff like that, you know, we can't have him win a third year in a row. Sort of thing. And I was, I was envisioning it as something like, like a 10th Nazgul or something like that, like something, something that's sort of in-universe and evil character that's getting really, really mad about the fact that, that Best Melus has won twice. And just kind of putting up a few posters, you know, that are just one image thing saying, you know, you've, you've got to bring your A-game, you've got to bring him down. And I was even thinking about doing something like we could put together a, a promo that is only awarded if someone knocks out Best Melus from the running. And you know, like I, I actually ran this by him. I sent him a PM and asked him about this and brought it up and he said he'd be fine with it. You know, being the, the kind of the target of the joke here. So I don't know, what do you, what do you guys think about something like that? Just slapping together like probably like two or three different one-panel images that we post on Facebook and Discord and elsewhere, and then maybe even make like a, just a fake account that's the 10th Nazgul or the, the foot of Sauron or something that's some, some evil character getting really mad about it.
Yeah, as long as Best Melus is cool with it, I think that's great. I'm imagining if somebody does beat him, hand out a couple of custom versions of Boss Mouse's former promos. Have like, instead of the, the champion tag at the bottom, you know, have like, you know, Kingslayer 2025.
Oh, yeah. That's not bad.
I really like the idea of a bounty. I think the bounty is a really fun idea.
Fun just being kind of a, since we're kind of a smaller tight-knit community, I think the concept of it just, just makes it fun for everybody, you know, or even though there, there is wide participation for a lot of stuff. We're small enough to kind of, to have these fun little, little jabs and you've got, you know, guys who are like, oh, I'm happy to be the butt end of the joke on that one. So I think it's neat.
So I had a few different taglines that I ran by him, like Best Melus must fall, the king must not return, and defeat the final boss.
It's even better because that is actually how he pronounces his name.
But yeah, so, okay, cool. I'll start doodling some stuff on that. And if anyone else is artistically inclined and they want to take a look at that, I don't see Foe of Night around unfortunately. That would be something that would be kind of cool, so. All right, so I think that's, unless anybody else has anything else WC related, I think that's about all I had to bring up with that. So next item here I have is bots and the hall table rework. So if you have seen the posts that I've made in the playtesting forum and on Gimp Dev, on the, the playtest server right now is a rework for the, for the, the table creation. It has now been distilled down to these two buttons. I moved the deck builder back down here so that there's, it's kind of one place for new players especially to look that this is where you get started. The play button now pulls up this, actually, I need to refresh because I was playing around with it. It pulls up this, this window with four different options for you to go between with, including a brand new option where you can now play against bots. This was put together by Wordigo. He has managed to put together a training, a, a training regimen for neural, a neural net to play Lord of the Rings. And so in these, I'm able to define what deck it is that they're using. They're trained only on the fellowship starters for now, but that is something he's hoping to expand. And then if I create a table, it goes up against the bot and the bot performs all of the opponent, you know, the other actions, the way that you would expect it to. It is kind of dumb and it also has no idea what to do in situations that it's not trained for, but as you can see, it is, is playing stuff, right? This is kind of a dream for, for a lot of players is the ability to go and play a solo match. And so this is something that I'm looking to get released sometime in the, hopefully before the end of the year and not bundled up together with all the V3 stuff that's coming out later. I would like this to come out ideally in the next month or so. So this involves a bit of rework to how things have gone before now, like the unranked table, there's only a couple of small changes that are here. For instance, the invite only now provides a dropdown, because someone logged in on the, the test server real quick. Just so that I can show off what this looks like. But so like the, the invite only dropdown here will actually populate with the names of people that are logged in instead of requiring you to type in. Yeah, so let me close that and open it back up. And we should see that, yeah, now Mark, Mark's name is in there. And so now when I, when I create this table, it will, it will have his name specifically. So you don't have to sit there and try to remember how the, the exact capitalization and stuff like that. And then we also moved the, all of the league stuff and tournament stuff that Wordigo had worked on from individual sections that are up here into their own tab here on this, this particular window. The league window in particular has also been set up so that you can now see the same stuff that's normally in that events tab up there. So you can actually join the leagues in the same window in which you are creating your league table. So that now there, there, there should no longer really be this, this separate process where you have to go elsewhere to sign up for the league, which I think should, should streamline things quite a bit. And then the tournament is, is just that, that exact same tournament creation setup that, that Wordigo had in, in, in that other section. So there are some, there is some additional work that needs to be done. In particular, I need to work on the CSS and get it to actually demonstrate, you know, actually be, actually work on smaller screens. I developed it on this 1440p screen and so it doesn't actually look all that good on 1080p. So I need to, I need to do some work on that. There's a handful of bugs that are causing issues in places, but I'm hoping to get this deployed soon, like very soon. So any, I don't know, any thoughts or anything on that? Any pitfalls that we should be looking to avoid that you can think of?
The only thing I can think of is that sometimes people are putting up private tables and they're waiting for someone to come online. Like I've seen people be like, you know, table for X person and it's just sitting there for a while until that person logs in. So we might still want the ability to type names in instead of being required to use the dropdown.
That is a fair point. Okay, I will need to, need to think through what exactly need to do there then.
Does it have access to all the usernames? Rather than a dropdown, you could have a fuzzy search box, you know, starts to pre-populate options based on what you think.
That would require, that would require a lot of work. We, I mean, I'd have to, I'd have to implement some way of, some API for, for doing fuzzy search. And it's something that I've vaguely done in the past, but not, not a whole lot. So. User. Search for online people. And honestly, this is, this is one of those things where I kind of wish that we had a bit more of a mature platform, because if you had the ability to like save a, a list of friends and stuff like that, then we could refer to that instead of requiring people to type in the name exactly, but yeah. So yeah, that will hopefully go out. I think that September is going to be what I want to aim for that so that it's out before the world championship. And so we have any, any of the kinks worked out before then. This is set up so that it works. Oh, so one of the things that this, that this does is because, Mark, can you throw up a table real quick? For a PC, a PC movie? If you can. So one of the things that this required is that because there's no, no longer a dropdown on the main page, that we also had to create a new joint table setup. And I have made sure that this works for leagues and tournaments, but this is something that we're, we're going to want to put through its paces. I especially want this out before the, the WC circuit game so that that can be our main test. And so if everything goes by properly and smoothly for there, then it won't impact the, the world championship, I think. So here they can see that it allowed me to join just fine. But yeah. So yeah, that's one of the things here on the docket. Anything else? Any thoughts on that before we move on?
Yeah, in, in the UI display, when you go into selecting, opening a game.
Sorry, joining or?
No, sorry, setting up a table.
Oh, yeah.
You know, from the play button. I know I've mentioned this before and I'm just kind of harping on terminology, but I feel like unranked only makes sense if there is ranked and I'm wondering if.
That is true. And, and so like just to, just to reiterate on, and so for, for those of you that haven't heard it, this is a conversation that we've had before. I do want to introduce the concept of a ranked game in the future. And so one of the reasons that this is set up, the way that it is set up is so that we can go in and just add a fifth button here and it will indicate that, okay, these are the unranked tables. Now this is the ranked table. But there's also, even without that, there's the idea that these, these leagues, these tournaments, like it kind of goes from least competitive to most competitive, the way that it's sorted. Because you know, if you're going up against bots, obviously that's not, not competitive in the slightest. A, a table that's up against a human, yeah, there's still going to be a bit of competitiveness there, but then it's not till you get to the leagues and then the tournaments that you have the actual competitive stuff. So the fact that it is a ranked table, like these are the ranked tables that it is compared against, even when it's just this, but, but that said, in the future, I do also want to have the idea of a, an, like an ELO ranking that you, and so you would, you would opt into that on this screen by saying, okay, this is a ranked table that I'm going into. And so it's kind of in preparation for that so that we don't have to be shifting the terminology more down the line.
No, I, I totally get it and I'm, I am on board. What I was going to ask is when you click, can you click on open unranked? I feel like there's potential real estate underneath the header before any of the selectors where we can give like a short description.
Oh, sure. Actually, yeah, that, that is, that is a great idea.
Potentially useful on all of them, but this one especially I think could use to alleviate. I know I was really confused when I first saw it. I was like, where's the rank?
That, that is actually a fantastic, a fantastic thing. And in fact, for the bot, we do in fact have a bunch of blurbs here because the bot stuff is new. And so we had to head off some, some complaints and stuff by putting, putting disclaimers there and such. League doesn't have anything, tournament doesn't have anything, but no, that, that is actually a great idea. It's just putting.
Yeah, just, you know, some bullet points about what this is for, who you're going to play against, what it means, you know, in any scheme of things.
And yeah, that, that, that is really good. Also, one, one potential way that we could do that is just have like one of those little eye icons over here and you click on it and it gives you a little tooltip.
Yeah, not always taking up the space.
Right, exactly. But, because this, this looks really roomy on my screen, but my screen is, is higher resolution. So I'll need to make sure that that works on lower res screens, but yeah, fantastic. Anything else before we move on away from bots and such coming out hopefully in September? Okay, Dimas, you wanted to talk a bit about the sealed and draft schedules, so why don't you take that away?
Yeah, thanks Katara. Everyone just let me know if I start to cut out at all wifi-wise. I'm still getting used to how the wifi works in this house and finding a spot where I can escape the kids a little bit too. So I did want to, I think it kind of feels like the right time to just look at, you know, sealed. And I wanted to talk about the evolution of sealed on Gimp over the last, say like 10 years, 10 plus years now. And then just get everyone's take on it. So I'd say the participation has kind of ebbed and flowed over the years and there's been surges, maybe sometimes for no apparent reason, or maybe new addition being added. But by far for the sealed, when we're talking about on the events tab at the top, you go to your leagues. I'd say the favorites are fellowship and then those special movie block and tower standard block seals, those are widely participated in. Those are likely the top three with maybe towers contending with tower standard, those probably close. But what I was, when I was reflecting all of this, it was like, I think it's noteworthy that fellowship is the only decipher developed starter deck list that's the most widely participated in. There, in a lot of cases, especially with some of the, the later starter decks, there tends to be, you know, gripes and complaints over, you know, man, what, what thought went into making this starter deck? Whereas the ones that, and as you've seen with what Nelson has put together in a lot of the many, many starter decks he's put together for the sealed events that he makes, you know, just over in this last short period of time. It, it almost feels like we as a community can even do a better job, you know, quickly without even as much playtesting as maybe they did or didn't do with the decipher starter decks. So I'd, I'd say fellowship is probably the only one that like decipher made those star decks, it's widely participated in. But there could just be a big nostalgia pull to that one. I feel like when I play fellowship block, it, you know, kind of brings me back. A lot of people talk about that in the, you know, the server chat as well.
And that, and that is, that has perpetually been the way it is, right? Is that fellowship routinely takes up half of all games. There's just no competing with it really.
Right, yeah. So I mean, in that, to your point there, it's, I, I think just from looking at it sealed, kind of is on par with, you know, when people just make a casual table, you know, constructed playing fellowship. So back when I started, I think I joined the community around like 2013 and Merrick and Eucalyptus were the most active moderators. I just was kind of stepping in and as I got privileges to run the leagues, I just continued the same cadence that they had always had. I didn't really make any sweeping changes. I think the only changes I really made to sealed things were the tower sealed decks that I actually felt like I had fair ownership of. And Marston's was graciously helping me roll that out some time ago. But other than that, I think it was only just changing games per series, you know, it's like, you don't get that much participation in the later ones. So I'll just like cut it down to, you know, maybe five days, five games per series to try to match the participation level. You don't get that much participation in the later ones. So I'll just like cut it down to, you know, maybe five days, five games per series to try to match the participation level. But other than that, no real changes as, as people have noted, it's just kind of, you know, we have that routine. You know, cycle that we go through and now. You know, fast forward to where we're at right now, with the addition of the ability to create limited games, you know, right there within the user interface. I think it's really neat to see that the people who really enjoy the sealed experience can do these little snapshot kind of mini sealed events. And as I'd been watching this over the last month, there were a couple of observations for me. The first was that like the on-demand events, I think, and just looking at how people kind of stopped participating in some of like those routine. I want to use the word mundane, but they are like the, the legacy sealed leagues. I noticed that there was an outlet now for people who like sealed, but maybe they got bad pulls in the traditional big commitment league. Or they weren't performing well, but they can still play and enjoy the sealed experience now in a snapshot. And the second observation was that you might have people that would play through the whole league and get all their games in if they could. Speaking of like the, the old like 40 game or, you know, 30 to 40 game. Four series leagues, even if they got bad pulls, they might've gutted it out, but maybe they just don't have the time to invest in getting all their games in. And these little tournament table run ones are just an excellent way of providing them an outlet to enjoy that experience. So I guess overall, I think the time kind of feels ripe for reflecting on how to make bigger changes on the seed league. Our sealed league cadence, maybe, well, but. As I was thinking through that, I also wanted to, you know, not push too hard for just getting rid of something entirely because. You do want to provide chances for. Participants to prove their grit. You know, I think there are still individuals that like the challenge of performing over 40 games. Four series and they like to be able to show the consistency and performance, you know, you might have a one-off where they win. You know, find gains at most depending on how many people are in there, but then if they're able to, you know, either go undefeated or even like. Do 38 out of 40 games when they like that challenge. But that shouldn't always be the default, I guess. So to me, it's like trying to find that right balance. My only thoughts were maybe for starters, changing the number of. Series for War of the Ring and Hunters, which are, you know, those really don't get a lot of participation and as you get.
Do you have, do you have a write-up of the, the schedule that we follow?
I could, I could put one together right now. It's really just kind of going chronologically as the expansions were released. But I should, I should write one up and then. Send that in our PC channel. I can give you the kind of the sealed routine we do. It's really just, you know, fellowship towers, tower standard. King movie, War of the Ring, hunters, and that's like your standard sealed events. In the leagues tab there, or sorry, events tab on the leagues.
So. Is it basically running on like a six month schedule where about twice a year, we're going to hit every one of those? I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, is trying to try to get it in my head because I know that this is something that you've kind of been doing. Kind of an unsung task where you've just been very, very consistently logging in and making sure that those are up there. Like this is not an automated schedule, if anyone was wondering, it's Dimas logging in and making sure that these are up. So I, I, I think that we definitely should be looking at what exactly goes into that schedule and yeah, kind of like you mentioned, not be afraid to. Break the mold and move away from it if we need to. I think that Nelson has done some fantastic work on the, the, the various sealed leagues that he has invented whole cloth. And I also think that it's a little bit of a shame that hardly any of those have gotten repeated. He keeps giving us new stuff, but we, we've got quite the, quite the library now of. All these, all the, all these custom sealed, sealed events that we could, that we could be repeating, that we could be offering. So I definitely agree with you that we ought to look at. What the schedule should be and maybe even do some tech work to make it so that, you know, a schedule can be defined without needing you to log in every month and do it. So then you can just manage the schedule as opposed to. Being a. A human robot.
Right. No, it's, it really isn't too much work to go on and put it together, but to your point, it's like if we can. Make the, you know, the data work for us and instead of us working for the data, why not do that? Yeah, no, I think that's a wonderful idea. It's, we kind of came into this like little organic routine where Nelson would publish a. Like the gala, so we'd have that monthly gala, which was one of his, but. It didn't kind of meld, I wouldn't say, and I'll let, I want to open it up for Nelson to give some of his thoughts and ideas as well, but I just don't feel like it. It really melded with what we currently had. I just kind of kept that same cadence, which was back when we used to do 40, you know, four series leagues. Or I'm sorry, yeah, four series, 40 day leagues. Seven total. It was like 280 days if we did the full ones. Now we've cut that back for a lot of them down to just in half. But you're still, like you said, you're only seeing them like twice a year and there's just gotta be, you know, you look at it and look at. All the stuff that we have out there right now, there's got to be a better way to do it. You know, the nice thing about the leagues tab, I think, and then I'll turn over Nelson, I just, but I do think I'm just, I thought of this. I think that having the events tab in the league where it's kind of a longer term event, it allows people to get their games in on their own time. But now that you have the UI for these on-demand events, these limited events, it's great for folks who want to spend an afternoon. They could even organize it ahead of time. It doesn't have to be spontaneous, but I think we could do both. I don't know. I'll open it up to Nelson. Now I've talked a lot, so I want to. Hear what he has to say too.
Yeah, I think. Certain leagues, we certainly can change a little bit, like we've chatted about making hunters sealed three series instead of four. Because really there's, there's just no point in, in having that fourth series. It's interesting though. So I've thought about this a while, a while ago and I don't know what the answer is, but. It's like, do we try to run the more popular formats more often and not just go in chronological order? Or does that take away from the less played ones and make it so that they really just never get played? Or, you know, same thing is if we try to have multiple leagues running at the same time. Do we then run into the issue again of only the popular one's going to get played? And the unpopular one is going to be even less popular than it already was. So it's, I don't really know what the, what the solution is. To, to the events. The other option too is. Do we just come up with some, some more four series leagues to try to make new popular leagues? Because two of the three most popular leagues are, are the ones that we, we made like tower standard and movie. So do we need more options? Dimas and I were actually chatting a little bit about this yesterday. About, you know, do we need some new? Fan-made four series formats for each of the formats? Would that bring more excitement? You know, would we be able to balance it better? Because there's really not that many leagues that are actually particularly well-balanced that decipher made. And I don't think that's particularly. I don't think it's particularly decipher's fault because we've played this game for how many years now, the same format over and over and over again. So like we're gonna. At this point, we've playtested more than they ever could have essentially. So we, we've found the ins and outs of the leagues, which they wouldn't have been able to find. But yeah, maybe we need a spice of something new, but it's still very recognizable. And more, more committed than just my one series ones that I've been building. So yeah, there's that option of, of. Investing time into a few more four series or maybe three series leagues that we could create.
So Mazdrav makes some points in chat about how when you're a new player first being introduced to the scene or even just a returning player. That hasn't played in a few years, when you hop onto GAMP and you start playing with fellowship. It can take a long time for you to actually master fellowship before you feel like you're, you have enough of an understanding to move on. And one of the things that leagues do, especially sealed leagues, is that it dramatically cuts down on the number of things that you have to keep track of. Because if you're opening up 10 booster packs, then that gives you, what is it? 110, 110 cards? For you to be considering instead of the 3,000 cards that exist in, in the game. So it, it, it's a very good on-ramp for new and returning players to, to be able to participate in those. So I think that, 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 that having those rather introductory, basic sealed games that aren't doing things that are too wild or out there. Is a valuable resource that we should have. And in fact, like, so I brought up here the, the Star Wars GAMP. You'll see that they have so many more leagues running at a time than we do. And I don't think that it actually gets in the way. Obviously it's intimidating to see 20 odd things on here, but you can run a lot of leagues simultaneously. Because a lot of these are going to be mutually exclusive for different players, right? Some people don't care about expanded. Some people don't care about fellowship. And so if you're running a bunch of stuff, it's not a bad thing to have a bunch of options. I think the only reason that you would want to keep it to a more limited subset is if there was in fact a core of players that only plays one league at a time. But I don't think that that's necessarily. An issue. Maybe, maybe we go out and we release 20 leagues at a time and we, and we discover that their, that their participation drops. But I think that that's going to be more based on what, what the, the format is than how many leagues we have running. So I think that it would be good for us to come up with a schedule for. Newbie friendly leagues that are running all the time so that whenever somebody comes on, onto the scene for the first time. They have something they can jump into that is really just, you know, this particular format, but you're only dealing with 100 cards instead of all the cards in the, in the format. And then also there, there's definitely room for also having some mix it up leagues running at the same time. Because you know, those cater to different players, those cater to different needs. But, but I definitely think that regardless of what we do, we should record and document what it is we're doing. Because like, you know, we, we don't know the, the schedule that Dimas is following. We, we've just been kind of winging it for a very long time on this. So it would be good to have a spreadsheet somewhere that actually. Documentes what it is that we're planning and, and then we can actually try to get some data, right? Try to, try to, try to track it and see how. How popular some of these things are, because I know that people have mentioned that, yeah, a lot, a lot of times these, these sealed leagues from the expanded era don't get nearly as much participation. As something that is from, well, that one just started, I think. So it's not a good example. But so here, here's a draft that has, you know, that's twice as many players signed up for, for towers block than, than we had for hunters. So. So yeah, I think we just need to come up with a tiered system. Like I like the fact that we've marked some of these as sealed masters, right? That's the, that's the monthly thing with the, the new hotness, maybe as a way of figuring out if a particular. Kind of like an experimental league where we're trying out a bunch of new stuff in here, but then maybe if something is a hit in the sealed masters, maybe we move it on to, okay, this is going to enter the monthly rotation. Because it has proven to be a good, a good solid, good solid entry. And yeah, we can, we could do some work to try and figure out multi-series, multi-week leagues. Yeah, a lot of cool stuff that we could do here. I don't know. I don't, don't know that we'll be able to hash it all out on this call because I think it sounds like, like maybe Dimas and Nelson and some others will have to sit down and then think about. And come up with, with some proposals of what we're going to do, but. I'm all down for, for mixing up the formula on how exactly we do this.
One of the things. Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, that's all right. No, you can go ahead.
So one of the things that I think Nelson's formats have really gotten me thinking about is less about the draft world. But I wonder if there's a way for us to do leagues that are constructed, but with some of these weird requirements. You know, Nelson's big baddies, for example, you know. I can totally imagine a constructed league where a requirement of the deck is that you include four copies of a minion that's at least cost five. And I know that we've got these constructed fellowship special formats that have been going on, which are pretty cool, but I wonder if there's. Anything worth kind of playing with in that area as well.
So you're basically thinking of like the kind of thing that Highlander does where, where we say you can build whatever your deck you want, but there's a special set of rules. That have to be followed.
Yeah, you know.
So on that note, on a related note is the Race to Mount Doom. Which. Was a product that was released by decipher that had kind of a meta progression to it. The idea would be that as you won a game in the league, and this would be a completely constructed league, right? When you, once you won a game in the league, then you would earn basically a new meta site that you were at. So. These meta sites, both players would be able to see and it would introduce a brand new restriction or penalty or bonus that would affect the players. So for instance, some of these, you must bid at least six burdens. Your Nazgul are non-unique. You know, like, like your ring bearer, except Frodo or Sam is resistance plus three. Skirmish, play a possession on your minion. Like it would add game text that would make things more or less difficult as you, as you progressed. And so the, the way that it was set up, at least for the first few ones, was that the, the. The, the particular meta text, meta sites would get harder as you went. So if you've won a lot of games, you're going to be ending up with these situations where you're starting with a six burden bid every game. And, and, and stuff like that to kind of level the playing field a bit. And the reason I bring this up is because on the Polish Mlotro, which is another, another platform separate from GAMP. They've actually implemented this and it's been a huge hit over there. So I'm wondering if from a constructed standpoint, if we ought to just put in some work to getting this system working. It's already there. It's already designed. We just have to implement it.
Very similar to what I was suggesting. I like that a lot. I don't remember this from back in the day, but I, I like this idea a lot.
Yeah. So and all this stuff is documented. One of the reasons I've documented it so well in the wiki is because I've been thinking about how exactly. One would implement it on GAMP and so I wanted all the information available. So feel free to look, look these up. You can see all the different modifiers that were official. But they also had it set up so that you could just write in something for your local league, if, if one of you, if somebody came up with a, with a cool addition or, or something. So that, and, and, and once, once that, once that is in place, then it is infinitely customizable, right? This is just basically implementing a new card, which we do hundreds of times, you know, between all of our virtual cards and Arata. So yeah, I think that that. That might be the next project I want to work on after V3 is try to get that implemented.
That'd be awesome. Can you click on these ones with the text, the picture? I wonder if, I just want to see what those say.
So, well, these are, so I, I had those transcribed. So those are the ones that were in the bullet points on. So, but yeah.
I randomly found something online years ago and this just reminded me of it and it's similar to those. But it was from like a, an event that someone went to and I don't know if it was official or not, but I took a picture. I'll have to dig it up. And see if it's something we already have, but because I think it had some pretty good ideas and that's why I saved it somewhere. So. I can look through those for some more ideas too.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I, I, I. One of the things that I like about GAMP is the fact that it does in fact act as a historical preservation of the sort of stuff that decipher did. So I, I think that there's, that there's value in implementing this, even if nobody played it, but I think it would be rather popular, especially seeing how, how it's, how it's gone down on the Polish platform. So.
Yeah, it would be for sure hugely popular, I think.
Okay. Well, I'm going to earmark this as the next thing for me to investigate after V3. Let's.
Before we move off of the sealed and draft, Mazdrav in the comments has, has made a point of how he thinks the leagues are really great, but that people aren't aware of them. It may be worth us spending a bit more time making announcements and posts when new ones are about to open up as well.
Yeah, and we do have that. Like I, I put it together basically because I was tired of trying to come up with good ways of, of announcing things on, for, for the world championship. But we've now got this system in here for. For adding these pop-up announcements that show up whenever you log in. So this here now has, has popped up now that I've realized that I've, that I've put something in here and, and this has support for images and such. We have used it a bit in the past, but I do think that it would be a good idea for us to start coordinating and, you know, every time that a new league comes up. It would make sense to add it to the list here as, as an announcement. The, the way that this system works.
Good idea.
Just to, just to document it and get this idea out to you guys is that you can actually have multiple active announcements at a time. It will show the most recent, the, the most recent one until it expires and then it will go back to showing the previous levels. So, so. Like there's not a problem with you guys going in and adding one of these in here. Although another way of handling it, which is the way I've done it for mine is I've actually kept a literal list of all the announcements I've done. And so I will, I will just copy paste the old announcement in here and then just put the new text at the top. So you still kind of have this, this listing of. Yeah, here's all the different things that have been announced in the last week or so. So maybe we just need to put together a document of this is the current announcement. If you want to make a new one. If you want to make a new one, paste on, onto the top of it and then replace the announcement that's in there. Yeah, so that way it goes out and people see it. Every time they'll log in, it's in their face and they can't, they can't forget about it.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I know we touched on this a little bit already, but we, one of our biggest problems is just not advertising ahead of time.
Yeah.
You know, two days in advance or sometimes less is, is where we're running into some issues. And which I'm certainly at fault for, for my own leagues. So yeah, that's, that's something that if we need to, we probably could focus on that a little bit more if we want to improve our engagement.
Overall, I really liked the idea of, that you put out there, Katura, of having something that's very entry-level for, for new players in a sealed format that's kind of just constantly running. Because if we did something like Fellowship, and then, and maybe Nelson, this would be a good candidate for your idea of kind of revamping, making totally different Fellowship block starter decks. Then you could even remove that negative player experience of the, the Urk Ragers. You have a new player being like, oh, my deck just got discarded. This game isn't very fun at all. You know, it's like, could have different starter deck types, but it's within that Fellowship atmosphere, where it's very kind of newbie-friendly compared to some of the other seals where you've got threats you have to worry about or sight manipulation. I mean, there is sight manipulation, but it's not quite to the degree that you see, you know, in, in Shadows and beyond. I think that would be great, because you'd also have those people that are very experienced, also participating in those and being able to come alongside and help out players that are new. So, and then my takeaway from this, before we move on to the next thing, was just, I need to, I think I'll put together Excel or something like you were suggesting, Katura, of like, hey, here's, here's what we do have. And this is kind of the, the rough schedule that it runs on. And then we can match that up against everything we have available. And that would help us determine what would be the, you know, the right way forward for our future cadence.
And Mastref also, also has a good suggestion for something that is like a progressive constructed, where rather than it being randomized, it's just a smaller set. So that you're, you know, just kind of constructing with just 50 cards or something and everybody's starting to dish on these lower sides. So like, yeah, one of the things I want to bring up is that the Star Wars guys have a big emphasis on what they call NARPs, new and returning players. And so they, they often try to, try to advertise that, hey, yeah, we have this NARP League running that is, that is focusing on the basics. They have a, I think they have a six-month or a yearly schedule of a NARP League that progresses through all the formats. So that if you're trying to learn explicitly, they have this sort of university system for going through and, and learning. But, but just, just by following and entering this league that progresses through everything. So I think that there's, there's a good, there would definitely be a good use for something like that is, is to explicitly educate people on how to play, like, and on, on, on how to, how to progress. Like, like what the, what the different focuses of the different blocks are and stuff like that. In, in the medium term, I want to start working on a tutorial system as well. Like literally have the ability to jump into Gimp and say, hey, this is how you play the game. I, I've got some, some ideas that I've designed for how to, how to actually introduce somebody on brass tacks without just fleeing them into a game and saying, hey, yeah, figure it out. But that's, that's going to be down the line, I think, unfortunately. Okay, well, anything else to say about NARPs or sealed leagues or anything before we move on? All right. I'm definitely looking forward to see what, what people come up with on, on that angle. So keep us posted. Next thing I want to talk about is the forums. So, people may not be aware, but the Last Homely House is sort of rotting from the inside digitally. As an example, I can't add new boards to the Last Homely House. If I attempt to do so, it throws up an error. But for some reason, Phelan Cassidy has the rights for that and it doesn't fail for him. So he, when he went in a few months ago and added this PC section, I'd been trying to make a PC section for months and it was blowing up on me. So, yeah. And then there's also like the fact that the code that Craylet came up with that has it automatically link a, a card. Obviously, that list needs updated if we're going to continue adding cards in Arata and stuff like that. And whenever you look at any of these lists from the PC, it's always a bit of a patchwork effort because all, you know, like any, any virtual cards that are being used aren't highlighted. On a Rata card, we just kind of indicate, hey, yeah, the one that highlights is not actually the right thing. Because this, this isn't showing the PC Arata. There's all kinds of problems with it that need to get fixed. But because it's Craylet's own custom code, and I haven't been able to figure out how exactly he organized the damn thing, we just need to, I think, move towards sunsetting it. So those of you that are not familiar with the history, once upon a time, there was a forum called Cobra Cards, which you can actually still find up here if you click on CC. It's still here. It's still available, but obviously nobody posts there anymore. I'm thinking we need to do the same thing for the Last Homely House. We need to sunset it. We need to still link it, still make it available. It's, it's, it's at a, at a sub, a subfolder that will be easy enough for us to forward to a PC, PC server. But I think we need to start that process and, and set up a new forum that is owned by us and is actually using modern software and is all, you know, not falling apart at the seams. So I have put together a forum. You can see it here at forum.lordofthe rings tcgpc.net. I don't have anything in it except for all the, I finally got all the extensions and stuff installed. I have some translation things in here. In particular, one of the things that I want to do is I want to make sure that there is a way for us to sort of plant a flag internationally for all of our different communities. I want to be able to have a French subforum and a Polish subforum and a Czech subforum and a Portuguese, Brazilian Portuguese subforum and everything. So that people can come in and talk, you know, without feeling like they need to do so in English all the time. So I have, and in fact, there's even this little concept of a user map. I haven't quite got it working yet, but users will be able to register where they're at. And so then you'll be able to come in here and look at it and say, oh yeah, there's all these, all these people over here in, in Poland, all these people in the US, all these people in Brazil and France and whatever. And so use that as a way of coordinating local groups. Because I know that there's a huge number of people that don't, we don't, we don't see so much because they're doing their stuff locally. And so I, I think that it's important for us to get this set up properly and finally bite the bullet on it. The Last Homely House is currently sitting on a server that Craylet transferred to me, but is really kind of a crappy setup. So I really want to get it transferred over to our, our actual PC server, so it's all in one place. And then get it, you know, sunsetted, shut down, but still, still available, still, in fact, we'll, we'll have to add something at the top, just like the other one had, so that you can click on the Last Homely House to go view it. But it won't be, will no longer be active. So, one of the things that I have not done yet is organize what exactly, what kind of boards we need, stuff like that. So if anybody has any ideas and they want to take point on, on trying to organize, what, what does a forum, what should a forum contain? I would, I would, I would be very open to any suggestions that anyone has. Another thing that I, shoot, just, just lost my train of thought, dang it, there was another, another thing. But anyway, so if anyone has any ideas on features that you want to have or if, if you just want to get with me and I'll get you the administrative rights, so you can start coming in here and creating, creating boards. I, I would love to get this, start getting this set up and start utilizing it. I want, I want to have this active and available before we actually do the shutdown of, of the Last Homely House. So that we can start, I, I want to put a little banner message on here that says, hey, this, this forum's being shut down. Please move over to the PC forums. And have this as kind of a, I want this to be a rallying place that people can go to if any of the other more local communities end up falling apart or shutting down or something. Have it, have it as a fallback location for if a Facebook group dies or, or whatever. So, thoughts on that?
I like it. I think dealing with the obsolescence issues that you, that come with that kind of technology, just starting fresh, makes so much more sense than trying to grind through and, you know, get the Last Homely House up, up to snuff, even though it really is a tremendous historical artifact. It sounds like you're saying it will be able to be reviewed and, you know. If you look at the guest users, not a lot of people log in, but a ton of people are online. They're probably looking at old deck lists and card commentary. There's a, it's a wealth of information, but there's no reason why it needs to be active to be able to access that information. Because if you look at like, the number of people logged in, it's rarely that. It's rarely just guest users, which is telling me people are just coming in to reference something they remember from a long time ago. Like, oh, that ent deck. I want to go search, you know, find that one. And it's like, if it's there, they can go poke around if they want. But it, it just isn't, it isn't fit for purpose anymore, really, it looks like.
Yep. And, and, and yeah, I, I definitely agree. I don't want, I don't want the information to go away. We just want to transplant the stuff that's, that, you know, that's necessary moving forward. And then, yeah, just keep this as the perpetual deck archive. Sometime, we need to actually put together a true blue, like, deck-sharing platform. Hopefully, you know, something that's actually integrated with Gimp and such. Because this is, this is just kind of a hack that people have been doing for a very long time, where they just sit down and, and copy paste the, the, the list of stuff. But like, I don't know if, for anyone that's not aware, in Gimp itself, you can, you can actually share a link. If you go up to your, to your deck list and then you can click on this link here. This will, this will give a shareable link. You can actually copy paste this elsewhere and hand it to people. And so I think that really, we just need to kind of take this functionality and kind of, kind of make it more akin to the, the old tech deck website and stuff like that. Something that you can share, so you can fork a deck, you can leave content, or leave, leave comments. And, you know, let people vote on decks to, to say how, you know, how, how good they think it is and stuff like that. Like, there's, there's definitely a missing, a missing piece to the community for people to be able to simply do that. And it's good that we've had this hack where people just post a list of stuff in a forum somewhere. But ideally, we can do a little bit better than that, you know? But even, even, even until, you know, e, e, even, even once such a, such a tool exists, it's still good to have this, this history. All sorts of stuff, like, there, there's posts in here going back to like 2006. Like, and that's absolutely something I don't, I don't want to see go away. But yeah, that'll just be the next, next chapter on that. Oh, another thing, too. If anyone has a good name for what we might call the new forum, I would love to hear it. Like, I, like, Last Homely House is so iconic. I'd like to call it something like, I don't know, Helm's Deep or Mythland or, or something, something that's evocative. So if anybody has any ideas on that, I'd, I'd like to hear that, but. Yeah, that, so that, that's more or less just something I want to let everyone know where that's going. If you have any bandwidth and you want to, want to work on that and try to, try to figure out what, what sort of boards need to exist, just let me know. And we'll, yeah, we'll start working towards that. I don't know if that's going to be done this year, but it'll, it'll be hopefully in the, in the near to medium future. Okay, V3 update. This is me. So if you haven't been keeping your thumb on the pulse for V3, V3 is chugging along. The plan is to release it, just like we did V2 last year, to release it as part of a Yuletide celebration in December. The cards are all coded except for one. There are 130 cards in this set. I have been saying for a long time that I was going to cut that down. And the more that I think about it, the more that I'm thinking that I don't know that there's much that merits cutting. It's actually, I feel like it's a fairly high-quality set. So as you can see here, there are images for almost all of the cards. The only images that are remaining are the, the empowered Nazgul, do not yet have any, because getting Nazgul images from Return of the King is awful. And then the, there's one Corsair that needs filled in and then the, the Sutherland trackers. And that's it. Everything else has an image.
They don't need pictures. They come into Play Hindred.
Exactly. Yeah, no one's ever going to see it. They go face down. But, so I'm thinking that what I'm going to end up doing for these is I have been reinstalling all of my AI image generation tools. So what I'm going to be doing, I think, is using the, the Weta concept art. And then there's also a good number of, like, Nazgul statues and stuff out there that I'm, I'm going to use those as the basis for generating images that look like they could be from the movies. Just like I did with Urquhart Brand with V2. I'm going to try and get that workflow to a point where we have usable images for stuff that is just not, not findable in the films itself. There are a couple of other art pieces that I want to improve a little bit. The Blade Test Matriarch, I want to pop out of her frame, if I can do that. And then the Sauron, if you see the Sauron image over here, that is actually a statue. I don't remember if it was Weta or someone else that made it. But, so there's still some work that needs to be done on the background and stuff for this, but I want him to pop out as well. And actually, if any of you remember the Sauron masterwork, I was thinking of maybe trying to knock that out this year as well and make it so that this is one of those cards that is masterwork only. And so have it released with that, with that new template and then have that as the basis for, and kind of the announcement for the, the Sauron masterwork that we would have available to use moving forward. So yeah, most of these cards still need lore, of course. Because it's a bad idea to, to put lore on something that you're not, not quite sure is in its final form. As far as gameplay goes, I think that besides a few balance tweaks, I think that most of these are in a good spot. I may do another pass over the Nazgul themselves, because it has been pointed out that they, they don't seem to form much of a cohesive strategy themselves, which, you know, wasn't really the point, but I'm, I'll, I'll see what I can do. And then there's, there's some balanced stuff that needs to be done, I think, with the new Four Companion Neochoke that I think, I think some of the numbers need to be tweaked on those. But other than that, I think that it's looking to be in a pretty good spot. We've got more playtesting done on this set than anything else we've ever done, I think. So there's a whole lot of, a whole lot of bugs that have been, have been squished. And a lot of these cards are actually operating the way that they're supposed to be operating a lot sooner than we have ever done before. So I'm really thankful to all the playtesters that have, that have helped on that. And then also, along with this set is included about 50 Arata. Because there are a large number of cards that are going to have the hinder keyword applied to them. Various things that just don't make sense as, or that are kind of two, a two birds, one stone situation where we're, we're nerfing them, but then also changing them to be a hinder, to use hinder, so that they're a little bit less toxic. Things like Galadriel Lady Redeemed, I think, is finally going to be in a position where she's not going to, not going to be as rage-inducing as she has in the past. Stuff like that. So I think, I'm very confident that we'll be able to get this out and start announcing them in November. I think that I'll be able to put together another blog series like we did, like we did last year, where we just trickle spoiler them a few at a time. I'm looking forward to people's feedback on that. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty well on schedule, I think. This is, I'm pretty happy with where we're at on this right now. So if you're looking to, sorry, Mark, were you saying something?
Oh, go ahead. I was going to comment on the rollout.
Oh, yeah. So I, I was just going to say, these are all on the playtest server. So if you are looking to, to test on those, just, just hop on and you can take a look on them. They're, they're all in Gimp. They're all available, all ready to go. I think just like last year, it would make sense for us to do an exhibition match during the World Championship. Have a couple of people play a game with V3 cards very prominently displayed. So that we, you know, we can just do that as our soft announcement. I have spoiled a couple of cards on Facebook and that, it pains me that that is the most popular post that we have made in a long time. I think it got something like 60 reacts or something. It's so, so easy to get reactions when it just involves a pretty-looking card. And all of our other stuff just goes by the wayside and gets like two likes. But such is life. So yeah, Mark, what were your thoughts on the rollout?
Yeah, so one of the things that I feel like we learned last year, encountered last year, was we did the, the rollout during the Yuletide event and people were really excited and giving all kinds of comments. And then we, I think we did touch a few things shortly after it in January. But we continued to have like, oh no, this is, like, this was commented as a problem and we haven't done anything. It's still a problem in March and April and.
So, one of the reasons why that happened, and it's one of the reasons why I'm very happy that we're at the position we're at now, is because V2 burned me out. And not just V2, but the, the Grand Card rework and all the bugs that were coming in on that. There was a three-month stretch at the beginning of, of this year where I was out of it and I did nothing Lord of the Rings-related. And so because of that, nothing went out, no Arata work, you know, were, were implemented, no nothing. And so I totally, I totally get what you're talking about, especially with the fact that we still have that damn laugh spell that is not, 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 not reined in just yet. And yeah, we knew that he was a problem and, and we didn't have that, that post-release support and maintenance that perhaps it should have had. So I, I'm hoping that with the fact that this is not a I'm hoping that with the fact that this is not a mad scramble this year, that, you know, with with V2, I was still doing code on it right up until pretty much right up until release in in early December. So I'm hoping that with the fact that it is, it is a much more spread out amount of work, that the actual release itself is not going to involve an enormous two month long crunch time. And this year, we're not completely rewriting the whole damn system that all the cards are on, and so there's not going to be an influx of 500 bugs.
All very, like, absolutely understandable. But I think that it still kind of benefits us if, when we announce the rollout of these, announce them, I don't know if you call it a beta, or just, you know, hey, we're going to be doing another round of changes and let's give a date. You know, let's say that we are going to have, you know, the first errata pass for these. I don't care if it's January or March, but, you know, have a understanding that we've done as best we can. We played it as much as we could. We know you're going to break some of this.
That is, that is a very fair. Yeah, I, I, I think that that's a good plan. So as part of the V3 rollout, set a first pass errata data.
Yeah. And other than, I think it should be before we start any WC events for 2026. I don't care how soon or late, you know, that is. I don't, I don't know that there's a right answer, but you know, because last time around, we read, like, we said in chats, you know, whenever people were complaining like, yes, we're going to take a pass on this. Yes, we're going to that. Oh, you're right. That's busted. We hadn't seen that combination in playtest. But we didn't have like a, thank you for the report. March 15th is when we're going to be rolling out the next pass. This one's already being looked at. You know, you can look at the playtest server if you want to try the the current iteration.
Yeah, that's a good. I think that's a solid, a solid plan. That's a good idea. Speaking of errata, sorry, go ahead.
I got one thing to add. I got a bit distracted by my son, so maybe this might have already been said, but I think we need either one or two dates for errata to take place per year. And then everyone knows that it's coming. It doesn't even mean that we have to do any errata during that time if we feel like things are fine. But one of the biggest things is, you know, it's always just kind of been on a schedule of when we feel we have enough information or we have the time to do it. And then sometimes people are upset that there is errata or upset that there isn't errata. So if we can be crystal clear, like, we're releasing the set in December, we're going to do an errata in March, and then we're going to do another errata post-World Championship. And that's it. Like, we give two dates. That's it. I think for clarity's sake, that's going to be a lot better. And like, you look at some of the the games that are alive right now, that, you know, they're coming out with new cards and and people just kind of, when they know that there's not going to be changes before an event, they often just sort of accept, okay, this is what we're going to be dealing with. It might change later or whatever. But I think that would help us and and make it more consistent and also just more manageable when we know we have these specific dates in mind.
And that's, that's very fair. That has been brought up in the past, and I, I agree with it in principle, and I haven't, I haven't followed up on that. So I think, I think that's something we should do. I do think it's a good idea. It's no secret that when I look to the, how how things get managed, I often pull from my experience playing Dota 2. And I often follow their example. And in this particular case, that theirs was a very bad example, because they they used to release balance patches at random times. There was one time where they released a balance patch mid tournament. So the, so the first half of the games were played in it under a different patch than the last half, and it was it was, it was, it was very entertaining, but it was a shit show. But so we've never done anything that misbehaving, but yeah, we, we, we definitely haven't been clear on when exactly we're going to do things. My only concern with having a schedule is that if something does arise, we need a system for, oh crap, no, that is way beyond the pale. We cannot accept having this. We need something, we need to do something about that. And maybe that takes the form of a short term ban. Maybe, maybe we say we don't do errata between these, between these two dates, but if a card is, you know, way overpowered, then we actually ban it for this period of time until it gets erratted during the next errata series.
Yeah, we can go that road. Compromise. I actually think, as you were saying that, Nelson, I, I was just thinking, yeah, that's, it's a good idea, because going that route also takes a lot of the responsibility for, you know, Katura and everyone who's, the burden of work is falling on you to do all of this, and you're getting a lot of demands from people. But if you have, you know, just these two set times that they're going to happen, it does take some pressure off. And if you're not quite ready to have one card prepared, you'll be like, well, we'll catch it at the next pass, you know, when we, we do it the next pass. But I had never even thought about that, where you kind of have an excellent, so to speak. It, it doesn't force players to entirely rethink new dynamics necessarily. It just says, okay, that card's out of it. It might completely affect their shadow strategy, but at least you're not introducing a bunch of new things suddenly on them. That's my thought.
Right.
Yeah, I do think there should be very much last resort, you know? Ooh, we really goofed on the last one. We've got four tournaments coming through. Like, we'll just ban it, you know?
Or, you know, like, like, I'm also imagining, like, if somebody figures out an infinite loop or something, or, you know, like, yeah, something, something that's just
Yes.
untenable. Like, I, like, I'm trying to imagine, for instance, would we apply that to Last Spell? Because while he's, you know, he, I, I think that he's been a bit format bending, to be honest. As far as what, what fellowship decks get used in in PC movie, but I don't know. Okay, so I, I'm totally down for setting up a schedule. We should put some thought into what that schedule should look like. The, the Star Trek CC is way more organized than we are. They have meetings like this every month, which they record and they put up. I think that's actually due to their their corporate status. They have to do that as a 503C or whatever they are. But another thing that they do is they also have monthly scheduled announcements for errata or bans. And so every month, they put out a report, even if it just says there's, there's no changes this month. It's, it's set on a schedule every single, like, the first of the month or whatever, so that you know that for any, any events that are happening that month, this is the last word. And so whether we go with a, a two date or a 12 date or something in between, I do think that that having that, 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 that hard line of communication is, is valuable, however we end up doing that. So.
Yeah, I think monthly might be ambitious, but yeah, quarterly, you know, Yuletide release, March, you know, Passover, summertime, pre-worlds, plenty of time before the main event for, you know, balance patch, and then a post-worlds quality of life, you know, rollout.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's actually what, what I was kind of thinking of in my head. The four times a year might be about the rights, about the right cadence. Post, post WC, pre WC, early year shift, and then Yuletide. And that would, I mean, that's about, it's not exactly every three months, but it would, you know.
I think it's too much. I think, I think that's too hard to keep up with.
As a player or as us?
As us, as us. Like, I think that's just, someone has to be constantly on it then. And people are constantly feeling open to complaining about cards. Like, I think one of the things that ticks me off the most is that instead of people trying to figure out different strategies and how to counter cards that might not actually be broken, but might just need different counters thought of, they just start complaining and to say, oh, the meta doesn't work anymore, and this is so, you know, dominating. Like, yeah, there's always, that's what happens in meta. There's always a top deck, and then people play counters to that, and that's a very common thing. So, and the other thing is, yeah, I think we're going to stretch ourselves way too thin if we have a, a schedule that's that frequent. One of the things I've been meaning to actually bring up in this meeting, and I had forgotten until now, is that we have so many ideas and we're obviously passionate and excited about all these things. But it's hard to keep up with all them, and it's hard to put forward our best product when we're pulled in so many different directions with priorities. And it might be better to have a, a lesser schedule of planned events. And that gives us more time to just focus on getting those things as right as possible. And then still gives us a bit of room for something new to spring up that we need to attend to if, if that happens. But in some ways, I think less would be much better. Like, when I first thought about the errata process, I wondered, would it be fine to even just do once a year? But then, you know, in what Katura had said here, I think we need the opportunity to at least have that reaction right after a set's been released to be like, oh, we really screwed up at this. Like, that needs to be fixed ASAP. Which would be the, you know, the first errata. And then after that point, we could be like, okay, now we have all the qualifiers for the World Championship and yada, yada, yada. And then whatever we see has developed from the World Championship, now we can react to that. Now we can say, okay, this truly was overpowered. This was an NPE. Like, things need to be changed now. We can see that. We've given ample time for people to deck build and plan against it at the highest level. People want to win this, so people will be thinking of how to counter the top deck. So I think, yeah, personally, I think two is, is the sweet spot now.
So I, I think you make a very excellent point, and it occurred to me while you were, while you were talking about it, is that there's different kinds of errata, right? There's stuff that is specifically like a nerf that is attempting to address an overpowered card or an overpowered combo or whatever. But then there's also like the buff errata that we do when we're trying to improve something. And it may make sense. Yeah, it may make sense for us to separate that concept and say that, okay, there's only going to be two balance errata passes that we do that are about knocking down the guys that that are up too high. But then we could say, okay, the Yuletide errata are not that, just straight up. Like, they are, they're for buffing. They're for improving and basically adding new cards via changes. And say that that, that, that's not part of our regular, regularly scheduled, you know, balance addressing.
If you make them different sizes as well, you know, if Yuletide is when everything new goes out, erratas go out. And then March is where we deal with everything that was very obviously a problem very quickly, that we got a lot of feedback on. And then June or July is the did we miss something? Did somebody discover something from a change throughout the tournament season, and we need to address it before the Worlds? But with the goal that there should be nothing in that list if we've done our job well?
That's a good point, too.
A medium one, and then a small one.
Yeah. So like, not saying that we have to do the one in, in June, but that is, that is, that is what we may do if, if there's, you know, a big red button that we need to press, you know, if there's, if there's something that comes up. But we won't.
And having it waiting for it means that people know it's coming. So there's no, I can't believe you just changed something two months before.
Yeah.
You know, outcry.
Sorry, go ahead, Nelson.
One of the big things that I don't like about that plan, though, is that we hear that one of the reasons people don't play PC is because there's too many changes. It's hard for them to keep up. Their life is, is busy. So I think we want to minimize the times that any sort of changes are happening so that people don't spend three months planning on, okay, this deck is working well. I'm doing really well with it. Oh, and now the PC noticed that this card is really good and we've changed it. Or something was really bad and they've buffed it, but now it affects their strategy. And it's like, well, I don't have time to like, I just don't have that much time to dedicate to this.
Yeah.
We need to let things sit a little bit more than we do, in my opinion.
I think you're right.
Because those once a year Yuletide changes, and the others are just for the mistakes we inevitably have made. Like, there should be.
In theory, it sounds good, but.
It might be.
From the perspective of someone, yeah. From the perspective of someone who has logged in, you know, for the first time in eight months, all they're going to see is, oh, yeah, there were, there were five updates. They're, 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 they're not going to see the nuance of, oh, well, this is one kind of update, and that's another kind of update. I think that Nelson is probably correct in general for, you know, people that are just playing a little more casually. Like, we, we kind of represent the upper X percent of dedicated people, right, that are spending a lot of our time thinking about this and engaging with it. And that's not the full game, like, the full player pool. Most people are just going to engage with it casually. So I think, I think Nelson's probably right, that we probably should try to, try to step on the brakes a little bit and try to, try to make it more more regular, yet not as often. We should, we should definitely, you know, put together some proposals, try to, try to try to come up with a good schedule and, and, and talk about it, you know, in, in text and see, uh, see, see what we can come up with. I don't know that any plan that we put forward like that is going to go into effect before 2026 anyway, because we're already kind of, you know, dealing with the, the, the hand we have dealt ourselves for this year, but I do think that it's probably a good idea for us to try and lean that way that Nelson's, Nelson's talking about. Speaking of.
I'll just say, I, I kind of echo what Nelson said. I, I was just thinking, there are, there's lots of different types of players, as you said, Katura. There's a lot of people that, there's types of different deck builders, and there's certain people that will, you know, either go all in or nothing. So if they feel like, hey, I, I know I can't give this deck 100% of, you know, my effort, because if they make changes too many times a year, I just won't feel comfortable with it, and they throw the idea out, they're going to compete in PC. Which is, is unfortunate, but I mean, if that is happening, maybe scaling it back a tiny bit, you know, not exactly to what, you know, we were spitballing, but somewhere along the lines of what Nelson was proposing in maybe 2026. You never know, you might see, you know, more participation. So I like the idea.
Yeah. So speaking of errata, we don't have this year's errata patch out yet. And I keep getting distracted by it, by a thousand other things. I've got the, you know, the forums I was working on, the bot, the bot thing I was telling you about, V3 itself. My attention is being pulled in too many different directions. Unfortunately, Destali doesn't seem to have shown up here. I was kind of hoping that I could ask him to take point on the errata. Implementing errata does not take a lot of effort, but designing it and going through all the, the discussion and everything does. So what are we going to do for this year's WC?
Small.
Yeah.
So a few cards we know that need to look at, and a few that we know we overhit Denathor.
Denathor, Last Spell and his staff. Are there any others that are emergencies, like, besides those three?
There was a weird loop combo with the Now For Ruin cards that I'm blanking on, but.
Oh, right, yeah. Well, we may, I, I guess all, all the, all that we should say on that is we need to, we probably need to get on that. Probably try to have that out in the next couple of weeks, maybe.
If we can. I think you, you're right. I think Destali's kind of required for that conversation, but if we can get that talked about this week, and then maybe set the date to have changes come out. We've got the, we're only three weeks away from the next movie PC tournament. I don't think we should make the changes before it. People are already practicing those decks. But maybe announce that right after that tournament is when we'll release the final, you know, balance patch for Worlds.
Yeah, I think that might be. On the other hand, I mean, people are also using that to, I, I, I'm torn, right? Because if you, if you release it before the event, then they can, then people can use the event as a way of testing their WC decks, right? Or, and, and if we do it after, it means that they basically have no official events where that that patch has already been played.
We're only three weeks away. Unless we can get it out this week, I just don't think there's enough time.
I can get, I, I can code them and deploy them, but like I said, it's all about, it's all about getting the, the exact. And unfortunately, I feel like in the discussion, Destali has been making suggestions for errata that involve big technical changes that I don't actually know how to do. Option. Yeah, when, when, whenever we talk about whenever a character is about to be exerted multiple times, do something. And I'm like, man, that's going to require a restructure to how exertions are handled. That's, that's big. That, that, that is not a, like, like, I, like, I was throwing around just like a limit once per turn thing, like, like something that's very easy and well-known.
Yeah.
Yeah, we may need to just. Okay, so we just need to get the WC errata out ASAP. And then, so any other thoughts on, on that or errata or anything before I move on to this last item? So thank you, everyone, for being here for this. I want to talk a little bit about my long-term goals for the game. This is going to be a little bit of a presentation. So I, I, I see that Nelson has had to drop off already, so I don't, I don't feel bad if people walk away at this point, but so I wanted to talk about where I see the game going over the next, like, five years. So this was actually a presentation that I put together before V2 was released. You can see that this timeline involves, you know, late, it was late last year. But I think that there are some concepts that I want to get on people's radar, even if it's um, even if it's not going to be released, uh, immediately. Um, so I I've mentioned before that my kind of my goal with V3 is that if nothing else, it involves us putting together, designing, implementing and balancing brand-new mechanics. Um, which, you know, we have a couple of mechanics that are basically expansions of existing ones, but then hinder is the brand-new one. Um, it's not, it has not existed in the game before. Um, it involved brand-new concepts like flipping a card face down that did not exist in the in in the game. Um, and so it was, it was virgin soil. And the reason that I wanted to do that is because there are a couple of reworks um, that I think we're going to have to do in the long term for us to be able to continue releasing new cards. One of the biggest problems, uh, that we have coming is what format do we keep adding new cards to? Like, consider for a moment, if we were, if we came up with a Hobbit set, what format does that go into? Do we just keep tacking cards onto PC movie? Do we invent a brand-new PC Hobbit? That is its own thing, that is completely separate from all the other existed blocks that have that have existed? I don't know what the answer is that would be correct within the the framework that we currently have. Um, and that is a bit of a problem, um, for for stuff moving forward. One of the big reasons that people uh, you play movie and not expanded, not the only reason, but one of the, one of the top three reasons is how many more cards it is. There's twice as many cards in expanded than there are in movie. And that makes it intimidating. That makes it difficult to, uh, to even get into, especially when you happen to know that there's only going to be like 100 cards that are the most broken ones and all the rest of it is just so much, uh, so much crap. So I think that we need to start eventually moving the PC formats, redefining how we handle formats. Uh, because I think that, uh, we're not, we're not just going to be able, be able to keep slapping cards and sets into PC movie, or eventually it's going to be the same size as expanded. And it's going to inherit all the same problems that you have with a 3,000-card pool. Um, the Star Wars guys are always running into this issue, um, where their their version of expanded is the one that they use. They call it open. Um, and that's just where the PC keeps adding, their PC keeps adding new new cards. And the burden for a new player to jump into the most complicated format that exists um, makes it really untenable. Um, all new players, basically for for Star Wars, have to go through a process similar to ours, where you go through the, uh, the historical formats, but this really leads to like burnout eventually where you where you 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 find the spot that you're most comfortable in and then you never move beyond that. And so, damn cat, get out of the way, trying to present stuff. So what I eventually want to do is I want to redefine how we how we define our formats. And so I want to work us, I I I want us to move in that direction. So the very next major rework that I want to work on, um, after, um, after V3 is, uh, the quest rework that I that I have talked about, um, in the past. So I've mentioned in the past that the concept of the Ringbearer is, and and the One Ring is a little bit too limiting for the sorts of stories that we might possibly tell in a set. The One Ring is in the Hobbit, but it does not have the same role that it does in Lord of the Rings. And if you wanted to go and and tell a different kind of story, even if you wanted to tell a story within the framework of Lord of the Rings, like if you want to tell a story about Rohan, you're stuck with Frodo. You're stuck with the One Ring, even though Rohan has almost nothing to do with the One Ring, you know, like, 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 why can't I have a a deck with Théoden as my main character that can't die or I lose? Just because the game happened to be so tightly bound with that concept of the One Ring and the Ringbearer. And so this rework that I want to do is largely a rebranding effort of just renaming the, you know, the One Ring and the Ringbearer across a large number of cards to make it, make it work in a more generic fashion. So maybe instead of a Ringbearer, you play a hero, and maybe instead of the One Ring, you play a Fate. Um, and 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 so, like mechanically speaking, nothing changes. But it it's still, it it changes your perspective on what exactly you're doing with this game. And doing this would allow us to start telling stories like the Hobbit, or even something like the Scouring of the Shire, that obviously does not involve a One Ring at all. Um, and give us the tools to be able to start telling alternate stories. Um, and and so this rework that I want to do I think does not fit so well within the concept of the 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 virtual sets that we have done. In particular, I think that what this is doing is this is giving us the tools that we need for virtual sets. Fennarfen has, uh, regularly put together random little batches of cards that I think he should be able to release at any time. Um, so you can see that these markers down here, it would be nice for him to be able to just say, yeah, here's a 10-card expansion, um, that is not like super big and and ambitious, but it's just filling in this little concept. Here, here, here we have something that's based around Pipeweed. Here's something we have based around Songs. Here's something we have based around Moria, you know, like, like, like just a little, little supplement uh, uh, of a set. And I want us to be able to to have that without the cadence of saying that, okay, everything has to be a big, massive release. This is also the direction that the Star Wars PC has gone in, where they they've tried to go with much, much smaller microsets as opposed to big, massive ones like we're doing here with V3. Um, and I think that it would make sense to be able to to be able to split those concepts apart, that one, one kind of releases for just, you know, new, cool cards that you just easily slot in and other stuff that is really more about reworking how the game works. Goddamn cat! Sorry, she likes to jump up on my desk and paw at my mouse cursor. Um, so anyway, um, what I'm trying to say is, uh, here, I in the, in the near-ish future, over the next year or two, I want to start implementing that quest concept and that Ringbearer overhaul. After that, I want to start looking at what I've been calling the era rework. Right now, we define formats by the accident of what set they happen to have been released in, right? So if I hop onto the Wiki real quick and I go over to formats, there should be a yeah, this right here. So all of our formats are are defined more or less historically, right? If it's in this particular set, it belongs to this particular block. And if it's in this particular block, it belongs to this particular format. Um, and this is a very uh, practical, uh, division, uh, but it's not very thematic. It's not very expandable. Uh, like, how do you, how do you deal with the fact that Fellowship Block includes a bunch of cards that are actually representing concepts from the Second Age? And stuff like that. Uh, but Fellowship Block comes all or nothing, right? You you don't have something that only has a few cards from Fellowship Block. Um, as opposed to, um, you know, just having a few cards. So the idea here is that we would sit down and basically sort all the cards that have been exist, that that have been made into eras. Where you say, okay, this is the Fellowship of the Ring era. This is the Two Towers era. This is the Return of the King era. This is the Hobbit era. This is the Second Age era. This is the Baron and Luthian era. This is the whatever era. And then, and and cards might fit into multiple buckets, right? Maybe you have a card like Double Shot that is just kind of a generic era. It fits anywhere. If you have elves, then you have Double Shot. Um, and so then the idea would be that we then define our formats around eras as opposed to around sets. And the idea here would be that you would have the ability to sit down with a particular set of cards that is based around a particular story rather than the accident of what set they happen to be introduced in. So if I, like, if I'm interested in having a thematic experience or based around Return of the King, I can do so without getting saddled with all of movie, right? King Block is a terrible, terrible format. Uh, nobody ever wants to play with, uh, play with it, but there's nothing there's nothing stopping us from having something that is as thematic as Fellowship Block and as accessible as Fellowship Block, but it just so happens to be geared around Return of the King. One of the reasons why this hasn't happened, I think, is because the alternate Ringbearers and the, uh, the, 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 kind of the, the thematic breakdown of the game as as it went to Return of the King, uh, occurred. But we can fix that, I think, by utilizing these era assignments and saying that, okay, if you want a thematic Return of the King table, then this is the, this is the the era that you are playing in. You're playing in the Return of the King era. Anyway, so I feel like there's also some other large-scale reworks that could be done in the future, such as the, uh, we, we, we I've, I've talked about a Shadows deconversion in the past, where we go and we take all of those uh, men, Orc and Urquai cultures, and we resort them back into the original, um, shadows. And try to try to do something to reinject all that, all that material back into the game. But for us to be able to do that, we have to have a way that people will actually want to play them, right? Because if all we're doing is improving PC Expanded, nobody's going to care, because very few people play PC Expanded. Anyway, so this is, this is kind of my, kind of my long-term view of how, of the direction that I think we should take the game itself. Break things away from the hard definition of the Ringbearer and the One Ring. Break things away from defining everything by set and instead make it defined from a more thematic standpoint of what story you're trying to play. And then try to get us to a point where all of the cards that are currently in the pool are sorted, where everything is in its nice, neat little buckets of, if you're trying to play this particular kind of experience, these are the cards that you need to play with. And then ideally, at that point, we will be in a position where we can very quickly and easily release new sets without needing to redefine our formats. Um, because that, because, uh, so I I haven't really gone over the the error format concept here, but the idea is that we still only have approximately three PC formats. There would be one format that is pretty much like expanded is now, right, where you can play with any cards from any era and you're just duking it out mechanically. Like, this is, this is the big boys, uh, very difficult to get into format because it's got thousands of cards and all this history and you just have to know all this stuff if if you're going to go into it. And we leave that more or less the way it is. But then you might have an era-restricted mirror match format, which is pretty much like Fellowship of the Ring is today, right? Where if you go into a Fellowship Block match, you're saying, I only want stuff from Fellowship of the Ring, and my opponent is also only going to have stuff from Fellowship of the Ring. We would define it like that, however, you would still have this variable of the era. So if I go in and I say, I want a mirror match era in the Two Towers, that is, that is essentially Towers Block as it is today, except that it would have support within the, within the PC framework. You would have all the errata, you'd have all the all the V-cards that happen to be compatible with, uh, with the Two Towers and so forth. And then you would have a middle, a middle, uh, range, which is a lot like what movie is right now, which would be, your deck has to be a single era, but your opponent might be from any era, which is almost exactly the way that Multipath works, right? Where I'm, I'm coming to the, to the path with a Fellowship, uh, uh, site path, but you're coming to the, to the game with a, with a Two Towers site path. And we just sort of shrug and say, okay, yeah, there's a bit of incompatibility there, but my deck is still based on that. I I'm not able to mix in anything else into my adventure deck, um, except for sites from that, uh, from that Fellowship Block. And so this would be the same sort of concept, but for your deck itself. So I am, I am, I am basically playing with a Towers Block deck. And yeah, my opponent is playing with a Fellowship Block deck and and we we sort of agree to look over and incongruencies there, but it still has restricted myself to a shorter, um, smaller pool of cards to make things less, uh, crazy, right? Anyway, big, long info dump. Really kind of scatterbrained, because, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of unanswered questions here of, uh, things that need to eventually be figured out. But this is, this is, I don't know, what do you guys think? This is, this is kind of the the general direction that I want to, that I want to work towards. So I want to hear, I want to hear y'all, y'all's thoughts.
I'll, I'll just chime in and say, I think it's really fascinating. I think the I never even considered, and and also, this is kind of a a twofold, it's also like a question. It sounded like what you were suggesting could be possible is if you're looking at, let's just take Hunters, for example, as as a block. And, uh, you've got Grishnak in there, you know, and you've got your Oglok and you've got your Mahur. You have these, uh, Urquai or Orcs that got put into different cultures from the Shadows era, but they fit into the Two Towers. I guess era, you could call that, if you want to call that an era, I guess it's really like the movie era. But you're saying you could potentially, the idea is maybe bucketize those and you can even retrofit them to get their uh, Sauron or Isengard cultures to fit back into that. Um, and then you're potentially spicing it up and introducing concepts and keywords that weren't initially in those formats that might um, you know, just add some interest, which are actually keywords that are across the entire PC format as a whole. Is that, am I kind of?
Yes, like, like, that, that is something that would, that would be ramifications, that we would have these later cards that would be reinjected into like the, yeah, in in into earlier formats, so to speak. Uh, because, yeah, people don't play with with a lot of those later cards. And there's good reason for that, I think. But one of the things that I've noticed while watching, um, and commentating on the uh, the pre-constructed decks that, uh, that Nelson has put together for these, for these sealed events, is that there's a whole lot of really good cards, actually, that are cool and totally thematic and appropriate. And nobody plays them because the, uh, you know, the format itself is kind of a dumpster fire. So I do want to see us trying to yeah, I I do see us trying to try and bring those back into the fold, you know, and and yeah, we'll, we'll errata the crap out of the ones that are actually busted, right? Thrawn Gill's not going to make it unskated, but, you know, but, uh, I really want to, I really want to see those cards be available and 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 a good, solid option without needing to say, okay, for me to opt into these cool cards, I have to pick a format that has 4,000 cards in it. Like, no, like those, those two things should be like different axes. They they shouldn't be the same thing.
I think we're going to struggle more than the write-up suggests on limiting it to three kind of formats.
So that that is a possibility. Um, just before you say this, uh, because I think I know what direction you're going, let me just think, let me just get out the, one of the pieces of justification for this that I was, that I kind of left un- unmentioned. I think that anytime that you go into a focused format, the the card pool size should be relatively restricted. Fellowship of the Ring has a little bit less than 600 cards, all told, which seems like a lot. But actually, that means that there's 300 free people's cards and 300 shadow cards. And then, once you pick a culture, right, you're actually dividing that by five. So so you're, you're really saying that instead of 300 cards, there's, there's actually, like, what is that, like 50, 60-some-odd cards? Um, and so I think that we ought to be able to chop the game up in a way that whenever you go to, that that any one era only has 600 to 1,000 cards in it, ideally. And all these other, the the other two formats are really just a way of of taking that practicality into account that, okay, you know, i- if you really want to keep playing, like, you want to have, uh, more variety and such. So we're not going to, we're not going to hold too tightly to the idea of a, uh, of a thematic, uh, thematic restriction to to only these, these 1,000 cards or whatever. But to your point, I also think that, yeah, like, there, there is a good, a good possibility that we sit down, we put these things in the buckets, and then it turns out that, oh, hey, once we've done it, there's actually 2,000 cards in each bucket somehow. I don't know how we're, how that sort of thing is going to be solved, but that was what was on my mind, was with with this idea of buckets is explicitly trying to restrict the card pool so that it is more accessible, regardless of what pool you decide to go into. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I definitely like the idea of, you know, 600-ish card buckets. And and maybe that's really 300 unique, because there are 300 always available cards. You know, Axe Strike can go in any deck and
Right.
Um, you know, a Goblin Runner is wherever there are goblins. But you know, so I I like it conceptually, but the kind of two issues that I'm struggling with are the, the idea of eras here is going to have subsets, right? You know, the, the Road to Rivendell is a subset of the Fellowship of the Ring is a subset of Frodo's journey to Mount Doom. But if those are three different eras, then do they each have, you know, does the Mount, trip to Mount Doom not contain all the cards from the Fellowship of the Ring or from the Road to Rivendell? And how do you make those determinations? Because it seems like you do have
I'll just say, you do have formats that are more restricted, that are even more restrictive, that are more for fun, which I think provides more in the realm of possible for people. You know, we've got, you could do just Towers Set Four if you wanted to, when we're thinking of decipher formats. Um, but to your point, I think that maybe you you do want to have just three competition formats, I guess you could call them. And then there's, you know, once you code everything the right way, it's just a matter of saying, okay, these are the ones that are going into this bucket. And you have another subset, as you called it, which is is really the right term there. It's, you got like a subset, but maybe someone just wants to play that little special Road to Rivendell format and somehow. And somehow site nine ends up being the Ford or House of Elrond.
Right, well, which is exactly what I have in mind for that is, you know, the Ford is site nine. And Glorfindel is an available companion, not an ally. But some of that makes sense, you know, some of that is saying, yeah, okay, you're, you're snapshotted here. Glorfindel's only a companion in this one era. He's not a companion in the trip to Mount Doom era. That's, that's nonsense. But when you then look at what the formats are, you know, not, not the individual eras. Cause I, I think there is some problem with subsets. And there is some that makes sense to have something exist only in a subset. But getting to the eras of them, so you kind of, you mentioned in the, the diagram or the chart on the other page, that your fellowship block is, you know, one era versus the same era. And that makes sense, you know, 600 cards, we're playing the same ones. This makes a lot of sense, but that's not one fellowship block, that's N fellowship blocks from a format perspective.
Right, so.
That is fellowship block and towers block and king block and, you know.
And that, that is, that is absolutely correct. That, 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 that format, the mirror match era restricted format, the, the fellowship, PC fellowship equivalent. That really is encoding a lot of complexity behind it. That just knowing about the format doesn't actually tell you what sort of decks are available until you also introduce that which era this is, this is, uh, set to. And I do think that it should be possible to say, okay, yeah, we're playing the more restricted subset era. Or we're playing the Fellowship of the Ring era, or maybe even we're playing the War of the Ring era. That is kind of this super bucket that, that includes all three movies. And really, you know, at first glance, you think that, okay, this isn't, like, how, 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 how does that, that fit at all? But, um, kind of the, kind of the point that I'm trying to get at with these, with this restructure is that we shouldn't have to invent a new format every single time. That, um, that we release a new set or that we release a new, um, a, 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 a new story that we're trying to tell, like, like Hobbit or the, the Silmarillion or something like that. Because.
Well, and for that, I love this. Yeah, like with that in mind, I think this is really beautiful. But I think it gets into a problem of, and I'm not saying like we shouldn't do it because of this, I'm saying it's, you know, something we should spend some time figuring out. I, I think it potentially becomes too many formats, but it also, I don't think there is a movie style format in here.
Quite possible.
You know, in today's world, fellowship is, you know, 600 cards, let's call it 400 usable. Movie block's 1,000 usable cards, expanded's 2,000. This doesn't have a movie block, this has a fellowship block versus towers block. And I, I don't know, but we'll have to play with it, but I, I don't know if that's going to fit, hit that deck building niche where you go, no, I really want the larger card pool because I'm trying to do interesting things.
Right, and I think it may, it may be possible that, that three isn't the, the number that we end up with. Maybe there actually is four ways to chop this up. Or, 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 or something. And in particular, I think that there's a lot of details here that are being alighted over because, you know, I haven't actually sat down and figured out what bucket should we do? I haven't actually sat down as a, as an experiment and tried to sort a set's worth of stuff and, and see what comes out on the other end. So a lot of it would end up depending on the, the specific details of how exactly do we arrange this in a way that, um, that makes sense. But to your point, I do think that you probably don't end up with something that looks the way that movie does today. Because movie is a historical accident. It's really just a, okay, people stopped playing after this set. And so we're going to make a format that is just everything before that set, right? So yeah, like I, I, um, it's, it's quite possible that we don't end up with something that, that perfectly matches up the way that movie does today.
I don't know that that's a problem, but I think it's something we need to.
It might be like this.
Have in mind.
The way that this is structured would represent a massive change, right? Because now it's, and, and in fact, I think that we're going to have to work really hard on the technical solutions to some of this. Because this is going to get beyond some people's stomach. Like some people are just not going to be able to, to handle this. And I, like, we're going to have to have very good tooling, uh, where you can go in and, and say in the, in the deck builder, okay, I am targeting this particular era. Don't show me anything else. And, um, like, we're, we're, we're going to have to, we're, we're going to have to have so many, so much better tools that actually communicate to the user what exactly they're doing and how they're doing it. And some people may look at it and say, okay, like there's no longer a movie equivalent, right? Like there's no, and, and maybe we can find a way to make that work. But movie, movie doesn't have an identity to it that is anything more than just, we stopped playing at the set, right? So I, I, I don't know how to preserve it.
I, I think in the concept of the new format, movie has that identity of all of the eras that make up the actual trilogy. As opposed to the second age or the first age.
So yeah, maybe that's, maybe that's that, that war of the ring era that I was kind of talking about, like maybe that. I don't know, um, I, I, I don't actually have a solution for that.
Yeah, well, and it's, I don't, I don't have a good one either, because it does feel like these are nested things, which should give that concept of movie. But they're not neatly nested things.
Yeah.
Cause you know, movie has three books, but each book has its own, you know, sections that could legit, I mean, you could have an era that is just the journey through Morio.
Yeah.
I think that would be really cool to play.
That March of the Ents that I, that I mentioned here is, is just, you know, uh, the, that little section of the, the Unbound Hobbits going through the two towers. And it's, but it's only part of the two towers really. And so, yeah, like it's. There's a lot of open questions that I don't have answers to. Uh, some of it is just because I haven't sat down and thought about it. Some, some of it is because I, I, I don't even know where to start. But, um, yeah, so I like, we, we don't have all the details, but you know, I, I think that we should try to figure out those details. And I think that eventually this is, I think this is the direction we have to try and move towards. Just on a, just on a practicality standpoint, so that we don't box ourselves into a corner. As we add more sets and as we add more stuff, so that, you know, because that, the, 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 the big concern I have is that if you try to introduce a brand new player to the game and you say, oh yeah, go play the PC formats. And if PC movie has, has bloated to the point where, where it's got 3,000 cards in it, that's not a very good introductory like thing, right?
Oh, totally. I, I, I think you are correct that something needs to change like this.
Yeah.
I also think that this is the kind of change that grows or kills PC being played.
Quite possibly, like that's, and, and like.
Getting it wrong, I think may.
I, I totally agree with you. Like we, we would actually have to be very careful and honestly spend a couple of years on it. Like this is not something that I would want to rush and, um, you know, put out a half-assed version of it. It's not like, it's not like a, a card that, oh, oh, if we got it wrong, we'll just errata it. Like, no, we, we have to get it right almost on the first try. Or, or, or make, make iter, figure out a way to break this down so that we're making iterative changes towards this. Um, I, I don't know how we would do that, but, um, uh, yeah, like I, I think you're absolutely right. That doing it wrong could absolutely kill the concept of, of PC formats in general. Originally when I was coming up.
Releases, but it's like, if nobody likes the soft release, you put so much effort into something that ends up just not getting traction. You know, that I guess that's the risk of not saying, hey, we're putting our eggs in their ba, in our, like this basket here, and this is what we're doing. You know, people either like it, you know, get on board or get off. But then if you put all the effort into it and it just becomes another dropdown filter that nobody ever uses, that would be disappointing.
Yeah, and I think that, um, the way that we have always managed to push certain changes through is by packaging them with more appealing stuff, right? Like the, the grand card rework does not benefit people in general. So what I did was I made sure that we included some features such as the, um, the game text search and stuff like that, that justified it, right? That we could say, okay, we couldn't do this without this big massive change. And so it might make sense for this to go out with something like a hobbit set or, or something of that nature. To try and underline that, yeah, we couldn't do this without having this, this restructure. And then, then at least, uh, there's also kind of a, kind of a bit of a Trojan horse that, hey, yeah, if you want to play with this cool hobbit stuff that we've released, this is the way to do it. And sorry, not sorry. But. Marson, did you have something?
Can you hear me? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, um, make, make a suggestion. So to test if people would be interested in it, you might, for example, pick one of those very thematic eras, I don't know, March of the Ents or whatever. And actually make a constructed league with, instead of having a set of, set of, uh, like list of sets, you'll have a list of cards that you can build from. And it might be a fairly large pool.
That is a fantastic idea, yeah, to, to, to sort of play with the idea in leagues. That's, yeah, that's actually an awesome idea because a, a lot of leagues, like you look at Highlander or something is just play this game, but you're going to play with restrictions. Well, that's all this is, right? Is, yeah, you're building a deck, but you can only build from this list of cards. Yeah, that's.
What a time to spoil some cards that are only available for that one event that may or may not ever come back.
Yeah. But yeah, no, that, that's a, that's a fantastic idea, Marson. That's, um, I'm going to write that down.
Yeah, it, it lowers the amount of upfront work you have to put into it. Even if you're, you know, cherry picking cards that were developed later that fit into that era. Uh, you mentioned like the race to Rivendell, you know, if you made a nine site path there, stretched it out, included Tom Bombadil somehow without it ruining it, borrow white. Other things added maybe two or three new sites, like, you know, things that people, we already know fellowship is super, super popular. Maybe, maybe that would be, that would be it. And it is some upfront work, but not as much as like completely redefining.
The entire landscape all at once, yeah. Well, that's a good, um, that, that's actually got my gears turning a bit is, because, because I was mentioning before that, um, I couldn't figure out how you would do this a little bit at a time, but that, that very well could be the way to do it. Is, um, just work on those constructed leagues or, or something like that.
Yeah, what if throw 10 new cards and 30 sites?
Yeah.
You know, like, and they can be wildly unbalanced because they're only going to be used for that one event. Final versions of anything, you know, just kind of get the ideas together.
I think in general, having, having constructed leagues, because, because like, it occurs to me that like, there's no reason that we couldn't run a V3 constructed league today, right? Like, like if, if we felt the need to, um, to push that out and, and, and let people, uh, let people do our testing for us.
It's a really good idea. And that you might be want to lock the V3 changes before the world championships. Cause now you, instead of just one tournament for testing, you might have a league and a lot of more feedback from that.
Yeah. I, I, I don't think I'm going to do that just because we're, we're pretty set, I think, on, on, on what we need. But it, but it did occur to me that like, we should have planned that in advance, like, like that should have been part of the plan. And, uh, yeah, I, I think that for the future, we, we, we should definitely do something like that. So Finarfin didn't show up today, I think. Uh, he had some stuff that he's apparently been working on in secret, um, that he wanted to talk about. I imagine that the sort of thing that, like, I, I want Finarfin to be able to work on isolated releases for stuff like that. So I, I think especially for the things that he's working on, it would make so much sense to implement them and then do a constructed league or two with them. With those little, uh, little packs of released cards. And get, and get people, get people used to the idea before doing a full release. So that's, um, yeah, we, this, this whole meeting has really just kind of been showing that, yeah, that there's a lot of stuff that we've been, uh, kind of not paying attention to the leagues quite so much, but there's, there's a lot of cool things that we could get done here. Okay, well, anyway, we don't have all the answers for this, obviously. Um, it, you know, it's really just kind of an outline, kind of a, kind of a general direction to work in. Uh, definitely, uh, let your gears turn and think about it. And if you have any thoughts, uh, you know, just plop them into a thread somewhere on, on the white council or something and we can talk about it. This is not, you know, like I said, this is long-term, uh, super long-term, at least probably next three to five years, uh, before this even finishes. So, um, uh, it's just, just kind of something I wanted to get the, get the word out and have people start thinking about it. Feel free to, uh, send me your feedback privately, if, if you don't want to put it out somewhere, uh, including you guys that aren't on the PC. I know you're, I can, I can see you there listening in. I'd, I'd love to hear your, your, your thoughts too, even if you don't have a, a place to put it in, to a PC thread. And so, yeah, I don't, I don't think we've talked about anything that I'm going to redact. So I think I'll just go ahead and get this uploaded up to YouTube. But does, uh, does anybody have any last thoughts, anything they want to bring up?
One last thing that, the presentation you have just kind of, um, made me think about, and this seems like it, it could be low hanging fruit, or maybe it's not a good idea. But, um, the, at what point, maybe it's kind of a technicality, but if we changed the, the way things are named. I know there used to be a, a filter where you could click official decipher formats. And, and for some reason I was looking for something using that filter and I couldn't find it anymore. It might be my ignorance not being able to figure out where that resides now. However, um, official might not be the right term to use anymore. But this got my, you know, brain thinking like, what if at some point those legacy formats are just called decipher fellowship, decipher movie, decipher, you know, and then you could, I guess if you do go into era blocks where you're not using the terms fellowship movie and expanded the way decipher did, you don't need the PC prefix, you know, to, to that format. But my whole thought process was moving away from requiring Pete, the players council to use that disclaimer in front of their format. But put the onus on decipher, because everyone that's coming in that wants to play, oh, I want to play it the way it used to be. If they see decipher right in front of it, they'll be like, oh, okay, yep, that's, that's the way I remember it. Anyway, that was my idea to just like, kind of make the legacy have the disclaimer in front of it as opposed to any formats that, that we choose to develop and roll out.
I, I have, I have wondered about whether it would ever make sense at some point for us to seize the reins, so to speak, and say that, okay, PC is the default way. We're not going to get rid of the decipher way, but PC is default. Um, I have often wondered, for instance, if the deck builder itself needs to have two giant tabs up here. Uh, one that defaults to PC and, and then another that defaults to classic or, or original or decipher or whatever. And just, just to distinguish between the two, because they are starting to diverge, right? Even, even on things like the, uh, the fact that you need to include a map card now. Uh, you know, like that, that sort of division is going to, it's going to increase. And so at what point do we, do we bite the bullet and say, all right, yeah, we're, we're taking the reins, we are the future. Go over there if you want to play the classic bit. And yeah, something to think about, uh, but, but definitely, we have to make sure that we have enough political clout in the bank before we can cash that in. So we would have to be very careful about that. But I like that thought.
Good point.
Definitely something to, definitely something to think about. Marson, did you have something? I thought you said you were.
Yeah, so maybe, I don't know, some of you maybe saw that I'm started working on a Wars, uh, kind of server and client. And I remember that when I was discussing what kind of supported platforms would be. I, I had a lot of pushback that people, that people were saying that they really needed to be running in browser. Is there any reason for it? Or is it like in browser as in on a PC or in browser on the phone? Or what's the, what's the deal with that?
A large number of people do play on their, on their phone, but I think the other part of it is that browsers are available on everything, right? I can do it on Linux, I can do it on Mac, I can do it on Windows, I can do it on my toaster. Like, by making it browser compatible, you're not saying to that handful of people that do happen to be running on Linux or do happen to be running on a Mac. That, sorry, I don't have a, I don't have an EXE for you. So you're just kind of up the creek.
This is going to be also allowing us to do it on our work machines during break.
That's another, that's another part too, not having to install anything. There, there's a large number of people that play this game on their, while they're, while they're working. Sorry, my boss came along, it's probably the most common reason that people bring up for conceding early.
And so one, my question is more, uh, along the lines, if it's a browser, could it be okay not to be on the phone? So still on the PC, fine, whatever PC, be it Mac, Linux, whatever. Even if I release a desktop version installable, it's going to be, uh, Java, so it's going to be a jar. Or some other exec generated from the jar. So it's going to be working on Mac, Linux and everything that, that runs application. But when it comes to browser, if it has to work on the phone, it might be a bit of a problem. But browser on a PC should be fine. Is that, you think something that should be acceptable?
Some people are, some people are going to not like that. I think. So I think what needs to happen is at some point, we just need to get our hands on an actual front-end expert. Because it should not be that much more difficult to have it work in a, on a, on a phone. Like, because, because at the end of the day, that's. Like, because, because at the end of the day, that's really just a different aspect ratio, right? Like even here in the, in the tools, I should be able to come over here and indicate that, okay, yeah, I want to play it on such and such a phone or such and such an iPad. Like, there are tools for handling that. Uh, we just don't utilize them very well. So like I've, I, I, one of the things that I've been wanting to work towards eventually is just hiring a CSS expert to come in and rewrite some of this stuff for us. And say, hey, yeah, we, we, we have this website that is totally not responsive, totally not mobile first. Can you please help us beat it until it is, you know, actually working on a phone? Cause yeah, we don't see how to do it, but people do it all the time, right? Even, even the forums here, right? The, uh, the forums that I installed, um, have all their stuff set up so that it works with, you know, on, on the phone without needing to do anything, uh, without needing to do anything crazy. Look at that. It automatically shifted into a different layout so that it works properly. We just don't know how to do that. You and I are not well-versed in it, but it works, it exists. Uh, so we just need to find somebody that has that expertise and, and pick their brain or, or hire them to come, to come work on it.
Well, so the thing is that, um, I'm writing the client using LibDX, which runs on all kinds of PCs. So Mac, PC, Mac, Linux also runs on Android and iPhone iPads as application installable. Uh, as for browsers, there's like a kind of a, it's called TVM. T as in the drinking tea, VM, which translates the Java code into JavaScript. So what you end up having a canvas in, in HTML on which you draw everything in OP, in OpenGL. And, uh, you have the, the logic of the game running using JavaScript. So so it's more in general, I don't, I don't know how performant it can be on a phone. As the only, my only question is if you want to run browser on a phone.
Right. And, and, and I couldn't tell you if it would be worth the effort to do that. All I know is that there are some people that do in fact, play on their phone a lot. I don't have stats for that, but
On the phone is fine because they can install the application as an application, as a normal application.
Oh, so you're asking specifically about mobile browser support.
Mobile browser, yes.
I think that, I think that if there was an option to install an app, people wouldn't care that you can play it on the browser very well. The, the only, the only thing they care about is being able to do it. But if they're, i- i- if, if you could just point them to a, a Play Store link or something and say, hey, yeah, just install this app and then it's fine. That will, that will cover it.
Okay. Awesome.
All right. Anything else anyone wanted to bring up? All right. Well, thank you very much to everyone. This has been quite a productive meeting, I think. Um, so we will, I will, yeah, I'll, I'll post this, uh, in the PC, um, channels so that we can talk about next steps on some of this, but thank you very much for showing up. Um, I'll get this up on YouTube, um, relatively shortly. Thank you very much.